...a master planning of destruction and that this shouldn't even be resolved in democracy. That it has a lot of people over there having sex and being drugged by some kind of water to make them want to have sex. When I first came here in town, I had drank water and I had problems with that. Disaster. And that has already made my mechanism of all our housing authorities and telling everything to throw off everything for the planning advice to where that is just a plan to... They don't even make a sense. And there should be some houses that been built with three inches in Fahrenheit and fifteen inches square in high... Square feet. That a lot of the houses.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next speaker.
Hi. Good evening supervisors. My name is Jane Dwan. I'm with the Mission Economic Development Agency and I'm here to express my opposition to this project and support for the appeal. I represent a program that educates and counsels low and moderate income first-time home buyers in San Francisco and in the Mission District. And as a representative for this program, we believe that homeownership does not happen in a vacuum but within a larger context and a larger neighborhood context. So we recognize the importance of creating diverse mix of housing in our community from affordable rental to opportunities for first-time home buyers. But we think it's irresponsible planning to disproportionately allow condos to continue to be developed without adequately addressing the social and economic impacts. From 2000 to 2005, over 479 market rate units have been developed in the Mission District. Only 31 have been made affordable. Market rate homeownership places upward pressure on housing prices displacing low and moderate income families in the Mission and exacerbating the need for affordable housing. Our clients will tell you that the biggest barrier to affordable homeownership is not the availability of condos in the Mission, they already exist, but the availability of affordable homeownership opportunities. Inclusionary housing policy, which we support, offers part of the solution for mitigating the impact of displacing low-income households in San Francisco, but that alone is not enough to address the city's affordable housing needs. The development proposed has 51 market rate units. These units are not affordable to the vast majority of Mission residents. Even with city subsidies, someone would need over $200,000 in down payment in order to afford one of the market rate units being proposed on this project. The below-market rate units, yes, there are nine of them, but nine is not enough to mitigate the need for affordable housing in this neighborhood. And the reality is that they're sold by lottery and being able to access them as a Mission resident is very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening supervisors. I thank you for your time this evening. My name is Malia Chavez and I was born and raised in the Mission and I currently live on 26th and San Jose, which is about three blocks away from the proposed site. Most of my family has left the Mission due to the lack of affordability, but I've chosen to stay and I've chosen to make it my home and I'm now raising my daughter, who's a third-generation San Franciscan and Mission resident. And I'm here tonight to address several concerns and to urge you to support the appeal. First, our issues of traffic. There'll be substantially increased traffic at this site due to 60 parking spots for residential plus those of the Walgreens. That will increase traffic based on residents, guests of the residents, as well as customers for the Walgreens. A Walgreens that will provide 24-hour service, which means 24-hour traffic and parking as well. There's also this increased traffic will have a major impact on health due to the pollution and also poses a safety hazard, making this already dangerous intersection even more dangerous. Our daughter will be attending the family school across the street and will need to cross this intersection on a daily basis. And that poses a real concern for our family and other families in the Mission who also send their kids there or frequent the shops along the corridor. Also, this 24-hour Walgreens, we've talked about displacement and this will displace at least one local business that I know of, which is AG Pharmacy, which is less than a block away, which is where we shop for all of our family's health needs. Also affordability. Not everyone can afford ownership of market rate housing or below-market rate housing, for that matter. And there need to be alternatives for people who choose to rent. The reality is, is that I'm a long-term resident of the Mission, I'm a public interest attorney, I'm a new parent, and I can't afford to purchase one of these properties. I need alternatives also. I urge you to support...
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Charlie Shamas. I'm here to speak in support of the appeal and against the project. If we look back near history, last 10 years in the Mission District, site after site has been grabbed by private market developers to build luxury condominiums and that has happened at the expense of the many long-term, multi-generational families, low-income working-class families, many immigrant families that call the Mission District their home. What this means is that... What this means is that a few lucky individuals have achieved their version of the American dream and this is luxury condominium style, but what... Who has lost is a community that has seen families, neighbors, small businesses, its heart and soul threatened day in and day out. In the language of SEQA, this is called significant and cumulative environmental impacts. And when we talk about environment, we're not talking about just the air and the land, we're talking about the people that work that land. So if we jump up to 2007, we look at the site of Mission and Cesar Chavez, across the street is a multifamily affordable housing project, 60-plus units with community services on the ground floor. When that project opened in the early 2000s, more than 5,000 people applied for those 60 apartments. What happened to the 500, 900... Sorry, 5,940 families that didn't... Weren't able to secure affordable housing? I think we've heard many of those stories this evening through the voices of young people, working families that have come out to speak against this project. Today, this evening, you have the power to say that not just any project is a good project, but in fact, to say that another project is possible. You have the power to uphold the housing element and to address the affordable housing crisis in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Eloise Bates and I've been a neighbor and homeowner in this project's neighborhood on Tiffany Avenue for over 30 years. I support this project wholeheartedly. I find it disingenuous that the opposition to this project is attempting to usurp SEQA rules to address social concerns and to try to use SEQA inappropriately to overthrow this project. I believe that the true statistical, environmental impacts of this project have already been addressed. I believe that the Planning Commission has answered all of the supervisors' questions concerning their due diligence in their analysis of this project. You've heard a lot of pros and cons on this project today, most of which were already heard at the Planning Commission, which has already approved this project overwhelmingly. I'd like to reiterate what President Peskin said earlier. Today's business should only deal with SEQA and with the appeal of the negative declaration. I urge you to do the right thing and deny the appeal. 60 new homeowners and hundreds of neighbors will thank you.
Thank you. If there are additional speakers from those in the aisle, if they could please line up so we have everyone speak who has not yet testified. Thank you.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Laurel Muniz and I've been a resident of this community for over 35 years. And I'm here to ask you to vote against this appeal and uphold the mitigated neg-dec. The Planning Department and the Commission have approved this project and the environmental impacts have been addressed. I support this project for all the reasons that have already been stated here today, especially the traffic calming measures and the affordable homeownership opportunities and the 24-hour Walgreens. There's only five 24-hour Walgreens in the city. When I was raising my kids here, my younger one, he's an asthmatic, and we didn't have a 24-hour Walgreens. So there was a problem during the night, we had to get in our car and drive to the Castro. So I really encourage you to vote against this appeal and uphold the mitigated neg-dec. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Eric Asail. I'm with the Mission Anti-Explacement Coalition. Thank you for your patience tonight. I know it's been a long evening. Just want to point out a couple of things. You've heard mostly tonight lots of testimony from our community, but I want to remind people that the context isn't just tonight. We've been here before you many, many times before. Going back to 2000, when many of you were first elected, these same issues were what we were talking about. In 2000, our neighborhood came together and asked for a planning process. And in the denial of that planning process over all these years, we've had to pass interim controls, which Supervisor Amiano and others have supported over the years. We fought the live-work lofts, we fought Bryant Square. We've been here before you, all the way up to 2660. In all of those testimonies, you always have heard the same thing, that we want a plan and we want a plan that analyzes the cumulative effects of the unfettered development that took place in our neighborhood and we still do not have it. And yet, project after project has been approved. So tonight, I urge you, you have the opportunity, you have the opportunity to finally right that wrong and send this project back to say that we, as a city, can do better, that we want a study, a true study, when we're done with our EIR process, that really points to the... And all the rules of the game will be clear for both the developers and for our community. That still is not clear. Supervisor Amiano in his questioning earlier of planning staff, it became very clear that this process is very muddled. Very muddled. And that's what this is really about. It's about this report. It's about whether it is appropriate. And we say, and you see that there's a very strong opinion in our community, that it is not appropriate. And we urge you to uphold our appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Oscar Grande. I'm an organizer of the Mission Anti-Explacement Coalition, lifelong San Francisco resident, proud father. You want to talk about EIR? Let's talk about EIR. Let's talk about the SEQA process. We're a city that can do. The Planning Department and the Planning Commission, except for Christina Laguiz, who always backs up our community time and time again, is horrible. They don't uphold policies, they don't do any comprehensive planning, they don't do any sustainable planning. It's project by project and that's the name of the game. It's pay-to-play. We've been fighting the fight for seven, eight years. We not only look at local, this site, that site, we look at the city as a whole. We feel that the Mission and the beautiful, wonderful people that have been organizing and mobilizing hold the weight of the city. No disrespect to my brothers and sisters in Bayview and Fillmore and South of Market, but we hold the weight. What happens in the Mission sets precedent to what happens to the rest of the city. And that's why we go to you. We go to you because our Planning Commission is horrible. It is broke. And we look to you, since they can't do it, we look to you for comprehensive, sustainable planning, vision-driven planning. And that's what we're asking for and that's why we're appealing the negative declaration. We're appealing it because we need to look at how will a Walgreens, how will it threaten our thriving local independent mom-and-pop businesses? We have a lot of immigrant-owned businesses. I have letters here of over 75 local mom-and-pops from the area. I have postcards from over 228 people that sign them that want an alternative vision. This is in addition to the 400 that have already been turned in. We need to look at sustainable planning, the environmental review needs to look at those things. It's your job to do it and we look for that leadership from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And if there are any additional speakers who have not given testimony, please line up, otherwise the next speaker after this will conclude public comment. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Bert Hill. I'm a member of the Housing Action Coalition and I just wanted to mention that I was in the reviews with HAC on this particular plan. A couple of things that I didn't like about it, the curb cut on Cesar Chavez and the amount of parking available in it. I had some problems with it. However, in looking at it more closely and following with it, I had to recognize that our belief in less parking and curb cut had to be balanced against the neighborhood group's requirements and demands for more parking, something that I'm not happy about, but it illustrates the fact that this developer spent time working with everybody trying to find a common ground between the two and to build something that in the neighborhood fit all the requirements, a very difficult thing to do in this city. So therefore, I put aside my ideal for the good and endorse the plan and oppose the appeal. I wanted to mention a little bit about the bringing in the housing element is an issue. We need a lot more affordable housing in the city, but I don't think dealing with it piecemeal, project by project, with people staying until 10 o'clock at night is necessarily the way that we're going to achieve our goals in the housing element. What we need to do instead is really put a lot more focus on the planning of high-density transit-oriented development along corridors, especially on the west side of the city who are paying... We're doing nothing in participation on the housing element right now. And I wish that we would put our focus there instead of putting so much time into these individual projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How do we vote?
No.
Vote!
No.
I love my neighborhood. She is beautiful and she is brown. You guys need to get out of my neighborhood, leave us alone, support us, vote no for the bill. Thank you.
If there are any additional speakers, please line up.
Good evening. I'm Gillian Gillette and I live on Guerrero, three blocks from this site, with my partner and two young children. I'm also the co-chairman of the San Jose Guerrero Coalition to Save Our Streets. The Coalition supports the Seven Hills proposal for 3400 Cesar Chavez. For the past two years, we have obtained significant improvements from Seven Hills to make this a neighborhood-serving development that also substantially improves the sidewalks and livability of this dangerous intersection. We believe that the public benefit of creating a walkable destination at 3400 with pedestrian enticing merchants adjacent to the city's main transit corridor is a win for everyone and unique to this project. 3400 will bring improvements to the public realm that the city itself has been unable to find funding for in decades. Personally, I hope that we can increase the number of homeownership opportunities in the neighborhood so that the relentless conversion of every one of the two and four-unit buildings into TICs and condominiums stops. We need more housing here. Please deny MAC's appeal and support Seven Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public testimony from individuals who have not spoken? Seeing none, we will close public testimony. Supervisor Peskin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, colleagues, members of the public. Let me start by thanking all of you who have spent the greater part of this afternoon, well into the night, to come here to the Board of Supervisors and testify on all sides of the issue. And let me particularly thank those individuals who actually spoke to the California Environmental Quality Act. It's been a long time since we've had a hearing like this at the Board of Supervisors and the Mission has been the canary in the goldmine on a lot of the housing wars and the wars about the future of what the central part of our city is going to look like. And while I certainly am not a huge champion of formula retail, while I would love it if I had the conditional use in front of me and could say that a 12,000-square-foot formula retail seems to be inappropriate to me, that is not what is before me today. What is before this body is the adequacy, inadequacy, thoroughness, completeness, or lack thereof of the environmental document. And I think that there have been, albeit few speakers who have raised these issues, a number of arguments with regard to the impact of the 2660 Harrison decision that bear scrutiny. Not around the PDR issue, which I think the Department has done an intellectually honest job of answering, and I think that despite the fact that you show that as PDR in the Eastern Neighborhoods Draft (EIR), the more compelling argument about Section 790.54 of the Planning Code, I think, works for me. I think it really comes down to, in my mind, the issue of the 2660 Harrison decision around cumulative impacts on the potential loss of affordable housing sites cumulatively. And I actually have been struggling with that all evening. I walked into these chambers thinking that the appeal was not meritorious. At this point in the evening, I have questions and they are questions that I would like personally to continue to explore. I don't know what the will of the Board is, but I would like to have some more time to continue to delve in and dig into those issues. And let me say something, and I mean no disrespect to the three representatives of the Department, and I realize that the environmental wing of the Department is in transition and that your leader has retired and/or is on vacation, and I know that all of you are steep in experience, but I think it would be appropriate to have higher-level planning staff here in front of the Board of Supervisors. I know there are other members of the Board who have their names on the roster, but I personally would like to take this matter under advisement to close public comment and to continue this item for two weeks to our meeting at the end of this month on the 31st day of July. And I would make a motion to that effect if there is a second.
There is a motion that has been seconded. Supervisor Amiano.
Thank you. I'd like to... As much as we'd all like to get this behind us tonight, I understand that. And I do thank everyone for coming out and that when I listen to the differences, some of them are finite and some of them are nuanced and then there are large chasms. But this SEQA issue is a complicated issue and I think for whatever side you're on here, and sometimes it's not just two sides, sometimes there's agreement that gets unrecognized or "let's do it right." And I'd like the two weeks not only to hear from the city attorney about this, because we are in muddied waters. And the gravitas for me is it's not just this site. It is something that could set a precedent, particularly that might be contradictory to what happened around 2660 Harrison, for other districts. I see that. And I don't want that to be... If there's going to be spillover, I don't want it to be a negative spillover. We could be discussing something like this in someone else's district in the next months. And I'd like to try to find a closure, particularly around the SEQA issue, the cumulative effects, the economics and social effects. So I would support this. And in the meantime, I would like to do, as we've been trying to do in the past couple of weeks, to do some outreach to both sides, to the developer, to MAC, about a coming together. If that cannot happen and there cannot be an agreement, then that's how it is, folks. We're all adults and we'll live with the yea or nay. But I'd still like to put some energy into that. So I can't promise anything, I can't say it's going to be a slam dunk, and certainly we're not going to come out singing kumbaya, you know that. But if we could take some of the rough edges off, I did sense a lot of mutual respect tonight, along with anger and frustration that comes from communication problems that are somewhat endemic to these processes. So I would, depending... I would encourage my colleagues to support this two-week continuance. And we would end the public comment portion of the discussion starting this evening, if we can get that two-week continuance. And so I'll support the motion.
Thank you Supervisor Amiano. So let me be clear, that public comment is closed and there is a motion and second on the floor. Is there any discussion? If not, colleagues, can we, without objection, continue this item for two weeks to the 31st day of July? That will be the order. Thank you all for coming. Stay tuned. It will either get better or worse. Madam Clerk, could you please read the next item?
Item 40. Item 40 is a charter amendment to increase the efficiency, effectiveness, and autonomy of the municipal transportation agency.
Thank you. Colleagues, I have had the pleasure of meeting with the Transportation Workers Union's Local 250A, Local 200, the Machinists, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Engineers, the Service Employees International Union, Local 10 to 1, the International Federation of Professional Technical Engineers, Local 21. I am hopeful that the discussions that we are having will bear fruit and that I will be able to introduce a number of amendments to this charter amendment next Tuesday and would respectfully request a one-week continuance on item number 40. Is there a motion to that effect made by Supervisor Mercurimi, seconded by Supervisor Jew? Without objection, the item is continued one week. Next item, please.
Item 41 is a charter amendment to establish a baseline appropriation and set aside the equivalent of an annual tax of two and one-half cents on each $100 of assessed property tax valuation for the next 15 years to support affordable housing programs. Require the mayor to prepare an affordable housing plan every three years and affirm city policy urging the redevelopment agency to use at least 50% of its tax increment funds for low and moderate income housing.
Supervisor Daley.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Let me start off by saying I believe in redemption and I think that perhaps if we place this charter amendment on the ballot and the voters decide to adopt it into law in the next year or two, this Board of Supervisors will be redeemed on the issue of affordable housing. Ever since the funds that were made available by the passage of 1996 Proposition A and historic general obligation housing bond, ever since those funds ran out, this city, from the executive branch and the legislative branch, has struggled to figure out sustainable, significant funds to keep our affordable housing issue moving forward. And if the last hearing is any indication, while there may not be debate on the need for more affordable housing in San Francisco, I think it's clear that the fact that we have such a significant and severe affordable housing shortage has exacerbated tensions in communities and has, I think, heightened the tension around land use battles. I think that if this city develops a long-term funding source, if this city is able to do long-term planning to deliver affordable housing that's necessary to our communities based on that funding source, then some of that tension, some of those issues that are exacerbated become, you know, become less issues. And I think that we would be able to resolve some conflicts within our neighborhood. I gave an impassioned speech earlier about my feelings on the diversity in the city and my feelings of building affordable housing as a good tool. Colleagues, if we place this charter amendment on the ballot, borrowing from the best practices of library advocates and the best practices of kids advocates who've gone ahead and set baselines and dedicated property taxes to those programs, if we borrow from that for the issue of affordable housing, which I believe is on the par with the importance of children's programs, I think you can argue that it's as important as libraries, the diversity of this city is as important as our library system and our kids' programs and I believe go hand in hand with that. If we give the voters the opportunity by placing this on the ballot to adopt it, I think for the future generations of San Francisco, we will be doing the right thing and we will be paying it forward. Appreciate the support of Supervisor Amiano on this measure and colleagues, ask for your support.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Mercurimi.
I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Are there any other comments or public discussion or, I should say, discussion amongst members of the Board? If not, why don't we go to public comment on this item? We will afford each speaker up to three minutes. First speaker, please.
At this point in the night, we're going to take 30 seconds, so we urge all of you to support this. This piece of legislation can really turn the debate around affordable housing to a real legacy.
If not, why don't we go to public comment on this item? We will afford each speaker up to three minutes. First speaker, please.
At this point in the night, we're going to take 30 seconds, so we urge all of you to support this. This piece of legislation can really turn the debate around affordable housing to a real legacy that the Board of Supervisors and the Mayor's Office of Housing can walk forward with, can get over partisan politics and some of the controversies that have come up in the past few weeks and really walk forward, walk forward, where we have a more affordable, a more open city. We've all seen the tragedy of thousands and hundreds of working-class people leaving this city, and I would like to see it really begin to stop at the next election. Thank you.
Thank you. James, next speaker.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Luis Barrena. I'm an organizer with the Central City SRO Collaborative. We've just had more than four hours of testimony concerning the lack of affordable housing, and this charter amendment would create a fund that would begin to help to deal with that lack of affordable housing in San Francisco. By placing the Affordable Housing Fund on the ballot, you allow the residents of San Francisco to make a decision about who this city will be for. We believe that San Francisco will choose a city that is for families, disabled folks, working folks, and poor folks in general. We believe that this charter amendment puts San Francisco on the right path towards creating true solutions to this crucial issue. We ask you that you please place this charter amendment on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Peter Maziac. I'm an organizer with the Central City SRO Collaborative. I'm here today to show my support for the San Francisco Affordable Housing Fund Charter Amendment. As an individual who works in with SRO tenants in the Tenderloin and South Market, I see this as a solution to what I like to call the housing bottleneck in the city. SRO hotels are meant as transitional housing, as a step towards an apartment or perhaps even a home. However, with a lack of affordable development in the city, SRO hotels end up being congested with families and tenants who have been residing in these single rooms for decades. The result, when families and long-term tenants are not able to move out of these hotels after years and years of tenancy, the city fails to address the homelessness issue. If families and long-term tenants stay in SROs, homeless San Franciscans stay homeless. The issue is, I see this every day. We have people on the street in the Tenderloin who want housing, who need housing, but they can't get housing because in the SROs throughout the city, we have families. We have individuals who've been working at jobs for years and years but still can't afford to move up into housing because there just isn't enough affordable housing. So to not support placing this amendment on the ballot, you'd basically be allowing the housing bottleneck that currently exists to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Jane Martin from Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. Thank you so much for your patience tonight. I just want to say I think this is a great, sustainable solution to an important problem that we've all been talking about, and I would just urge you, given the current political situation, to strongly consider putting this on the ballot in February instead. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. I'm Shannon Dodge, Housing Director, Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. Thanks for your stamina this evening. You know, I'm strongly in support of this. We absolutely want to see a funding source that's solid for affordable housing, that will last. I, as many other affordable housing advocates did, worked hard on the 2004 and 2000 Affordable Housing Bond campaigns with the unrealistic two-thirds threshold that's required for those bonds for a dedicated purpose. We saw that more than 50%, more than 60% of San Francisco voters supported those bonds, but it still wasn't enough. I think this one could go to victory. I would want to urge that rather than going forward on the November ballot, that it go forward on the February ballot. I think that's more of a winning strategy, but with that caveat, I strongly support this, and I hope you, Supervisors, will as well.
Next speaker.
Justice Smoot, Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. I want to thank Supervisor Daley for sponsoring this charter amendment, for putting it together. As Shannon just said, it is incredibly important, and I think all of us who have worked on the last three Affordable Housing Bonds would agree that we really don't want to work on another one again. But to have a dedicated source that's so large for affordable housing is crucial for the city, and we've seen what the Children's Fund's been able to do for youth services and family services for the city. It's extremely important. Would like to urge some consideration of greater flexibility in how the two-and-a-half percent set-aside funds would be used. So that's my only comment. But otherwise, very much strongly in support of the concept of a charter amendment to set aside two-and-a-half percent of general fund for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot, Mr. Casada.
Very briefly, Supervisors, I want to thank Supervisor Daley for putting this charter amendment forward. We at MAC strongly support this measure. Obviously, after four hours of testimony, affordable housing should be elevated to a higher level in our funding process. Also, I want to point out that with general fund funding for affordable housing, we can be very creative on how we use those fundings, more than some of the funding that we normally get through CDBG and whatnot. And that opens opportunities to be able to house and develop projects that could house underserved populations, special need populations that may not qualify for some of those other resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. I'm Zoe Johnson. It's a beautiful day outside, and I think affordable housing needs to be regulated underneath, you know, the poor in accordance with their income, and that should be done as all together and combined, and a lot of the other different attitudes with the different people should be put into a different kind of areas in affordable housing. And I have a prescription that I already sketched out to you already on some of these housing building processes, and in this result, I should be, you know, go forward in this. I'm sorry that I had this trouble with this stop with my eyesight, and it also has a lot to do with your health issues and deterioration of your kidneys. This is all going to be in bypass, which has really been hard for me, but I know Lord will find.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next speaker, please.
As the last speaker of the night, I will say my last speaker of the night, I would just congratulate you all again for being here so long and your stamina and your dedication to the community. That dollar's still there, by the way, so just let you guys know. So my name is LaLupa Reola. I'm with St. Peter's Housing Committee in San Francisco. So again, I just want to urge you to put this charter amendment on the ballot. It would give us a stable, substantial Affordable Housing Fund to carry out the kind of projects and the kind of needs that the community has currently. I would also push for part of this charter amendment, or for the money from this charter amendment, to also go towards building housing for folks that do not qualify for regular affordable housing, such as folks sometimes undocumented, sometimes folks that even make even, you know, below the, you know, even the 40% median income. And I would also say that we also put this charter amendment also in the February ballot to give us more time to be able to organize. But again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Yes, thank you very much. I am aware that this is not general public comment. Stop the corporate rape of the public library, don't give money to Friends and Foundation, don't accept money from the Friends and Foundation. One of the things that was said when this proposal was introduced was the idea that there was some reciprocity between importance and a set-aside. And I would submit that there is no such connection. In fact, a set-aside is not an indication of importance. And in fact, one of the virtues of this proposal is its capacity to expose a certain amount of hypocrisy. Set-asides in general are not good policy. I think you recognize that they're not good policy because you, as members of the Board of Supervisors, are in charge, presumably, of balancing the priorities in our society. And setting aside if something because it's romantic for you leads down the road to bad policy. Would you take environmental dollars and set them all aside for koala bears and pandas? No, you would not, because when it comes time to budget, you have real needs in society that have to be balanced on a year-by-year basis in immediate circumstances. And you don't want to tie your hands. I don't think the citizens who elected you to be their representatives wanted you to tie your hands with these various set-asides. And as I say, the capacity of this provision to expose hypocrisy in who wants set-asides for some things and then who wants set-asides for others, I suspect will be very dramatic here. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public who want to testify on this item number 41? The charter amendment for an affordable housing fund, seeing none, we will close public comment. The matter is in the hands of the Board. Supervisor Dufte.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to talk about this item, obviously, it comes in the context of the predecessors, which involved the supplemental that we did for affordable housing, that the mayor deemed not to spend and return and reappropriate it, which was frustrating. Certainly, there were eight members of this Board that did support it, and I did. And I reflected earlier on the testimony around the budget, and the author of this measure left the room immediately after speaking, and I did not want to say this without him being here. But in this empty board chamber, the reality is that, to me, the 800-pound elephant in the room is that for someone who sees himself as the strongest opponent to the mayor, you've done more to reelect him than everybody in this room combined. I mean, I just think that what has happened over the past month and a half...
Supervisor, if you can direct your comments to the body and to the chair, I think that would be most helpful and appropriate, and that goes for every member of this body.
I think that what we're faced with tonight is incredibly frustrating, because we need a mechanism that is going to generate affordable housing. And you see that many of the stakeholders are not in this room, and they have not been knocking on our door because they are concerned that we cannot put ourselves in a three-strike situation where we fail at the ballot for a third time. And regardless of the fact that we've achieved over 60%, this would be a very different campaign when the mayor of this city has indicated that he would oppose this measure and does not see it as being appropriate. And I think that we have to recognize that it is harmful to the city for us not to come together. And I issue this not as simply a challenge to the author of this measure, it is a challenge to the mayor. Yes, SF Hope is part of the solution, but it is not the totality of a solution that we need, so we don't face the issues that we have over 3,400 Cesar Chavez, or that we don't have the opportunity to acquire parcels that become available. But the reality is, I don't believe that this measure could pass. I think that there are those that would be naysayers, that would say that we would overly tie the hands of budgeting for years to come. And many of us would question whether we would have the opportunity through the budget process to address discrete district and constituency needs that cut across the city in terms of gay and lesbian needs, needs for other communities. And so I simply am frustrated because I am for affordable housing. But I think that we have got to get past our partisanship and on all sides of this, and I think that we have to come forward with something that is going to succeed.
Thank you for that collaborative discourse. Supervisor Mercurimi, you have not yet spoken, and then we will return to the author. Supervisor Mercurimi.
I'll defer to Supervisor Daley. I'll come in.
Supervisor Daley.
Thank you, Supervisor Mercurimi. Mr. President, you know, I appreciate Supervisor Dufte's comments, although I'm not exactly sure what they mean. You know, if we want to talk about, you know, who's responsible for elections, it's talk about where money is and politics, and we do that, and we've engaged in campaign finance reform and what have you, and, you know, clearly, there's been some discussion in the community and then here at the Board about whether or not November is the most likely ballot for items to pass. I mean, let's be clear, the most likely ballot for items to pass is November 2008. That's the ballot within the next, you know, four years, which will have the highest turnout.
But you're proposing November 2007.
I am proposing November 2007, because we are here in July of 2007. If we were here in July of 2008, I'd be talking about November of 2008. I think that, a couple of things. One, this measure would pass in November 2007, and I appreciate the endorser of the incumbent who has a concern about the position of the incumbent mayor on this measure. I appreciate that through the chair to Supervisor Dufte. And I do appreciate the uncomfortable situation that an incumbent on the ballot will have, personally not liking a measure that is going to be immensely popular and I would assume would get somewhere in the neighborhood of 60% or perhaps even more of the vote. We know that charter amendments, that includes set-asides and allocations of property tax, do better than general obligation bonds. And on the issue of affordable housing, we've seen general obligation bonds, even on elections that aren't the best elections, receiving high 50s into the low 60s percent of the vote. But with the two-thirds threshold, those measures don't pass. I believe that this measure would be more popular with the electorate, because there are certain voters who vote against general obligation bonds, because that increases their property tax bill. This measure will not increase the property tax bill, and some voters just go no on those bonds, and they might go yes on this measure. Therefore, this measure has a better chance of receiving even more votes than a general obligation bond that I would assume would pull somewhere in the low 60s on this measure. Colleagues, I've authored, I think, 17 measures over the last six years of elections. 14 of those 17 have passed. I think that, you know, it's one of the better records. I'm able to sense usually pretty well whether a measure has a good chance of passing. I think this measure has a good chance of passing. If it doesn't pass, I think we should take a look at the history of ballot measures that have appeared on multiple elections, and you'll see that there is, there's plenty of examples of measures very similar or even identical that have received different votes, yea or nay votes on various election cycles. So I'm not worried if there is a, in the freak-off chance of a November 2007 failure of a February, June, or November 2008 passage. And let's be clear, the magic is not a measure failing at the ballot, the magic is a measure passing at the ballot. In other words, a measure passing is more good than a measure not passing is bad, because when a measure passes, it's very difficult to undo, but if a measure fails to receive support, it always can receive support later. So having said all of that, we've gotten to the point where whether or not we think San Franciscans should have the opportunity to vote on this item at the next election. And I think that affordable housing rises to the level of importance where San Franciscans do deserve the opportunity to weigh in. I appreciate Mr. Chafee's points. They were reminiscent of my good friend Matt Gonzalez, who used to take principled positions, intellectually principled positions against set-asides within the budget. But let's be honest, this is a way that we've moved forward to protect or to guarantee funding for areas of service that we think are important and need some protected long-term funding. And I think for the area of affordable housing, where it takes multiple years in order to deliver affordable housing projects, it makes sense to have long-term funding, a protected funding source over a period of time, in this case, 15 years, for that program. I would ask for your support of placing this item on the ballot, and wouldn't campaign for the measure from my City Hall office, of course, but would do my due diligence to ensure that this measure would pass. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Peskin. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colleagues, the road to hell. Let me say the following words. If I had it to do over again on any number of things that I have voted to send to the ballot where it was clear at the get-go that the community that needed to support it to get it passed was not ready to go, I would do it over again. I cannot tell you, and I can point fingers, I can point one of them at myself, but the testimony that I have heard here tonight from any number of people who are the natural supporters of this, saying, "Why don't we..." "We've got questions, we want changes, let's go for February, let's not go now," is every indication to me that this thing is not ready for primetime in November. That concludes my statement. On the item number 41, to place...
On the item number forty-one, to place it on the ballot, a roll call, please.
Supervisor Peskin.
No.
Peskin, no. Supervisor Sandoval. Sandoval, yeah, seat. Sandoval, yes. Aye. Excuse me, Sandoval, aye. Tired. Supervisor Alioto Pier. Alioto Pier, no. Supervisor Amiano.
Aye.
Amiano, aye. Supervisor Daley. Daley, aye. Supervisor Dufte. Dufte, no. Supervisor Ellsberg. Ellsberg, no. Supervisor Jew.
No.
Jew, no. Supervisor Maxwell.
No.
Maxwell, no. Supervisor McGoldrick.
No.
McGoldrick, no. Supervisor Mirakarimi.
Aye.
Mirakarimi, aye. There are five ayes and six nos.
Four ayes and seven nos.
Excuse me, four ayes and seven nos.
Charter amendment is not submitted. Next item, please.
Item forty-two is a charter amendment authorizing the Board of Supervisors to amend a contract with the public employees retirement system in order to transfer to the San Francisco Employees Retirement System the assets and liabilities of certain airport police officers.
Supervisor McGoldrick, briefly, and then a roll call.
Thank you very much, colleagues. I ask for your support.
Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, is there any public comment on this item number forty-two? We'll have one minute for public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, Sylvie Johnson, I think item forty-two has been in measurement to probably precise in the other edit. In our proceedings is very highly, you know, in conflict with this precise measurement in which I always admit having problems all my life with.
Thank you. That will conclude public comment. Public comment is closed, and on the item, a roll call, please.
Supervisor Peskin.
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Sandoval. Sandoval, aye. Supervisor Alioto Pier.
Aye.
Alioto Pier, aye. Supervisor Amiano. Amiano, aye. Supervisor Daley. Daley, no. Supervisor Dufte.
Aye.
Dufte, aye. Supervisor Ellsberg. Ellsberg, aye. Supervisor Jew.
Aye.
Jew, aye. Supervisor Maxwell.
Aye.
Maxwell, aye. Supervisor McGoldrick.
Aye.
McGoldrick, aye. Supervisor Mirakarimi.
Aye.
Mirakarimi, aye. There are ten ayes and one no.
Charter amendment is submitted. Next item.
Item forty-three is an ordinance amending the San Francisco Police Code to increase permit and license fees for certain motor vehicle for higher permits, and to repeal obsolete provisions, and to authorize an annual adjustment to such fees to match challenge changes in the Consumer Price Index and ratifying fees previously collected.
Supervisor Jew.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to state that I ask per the city attorney, I have to recuse myself on this one.
And that would be on the basis of?
Of my interest in a taxi permit.
Motion to recuse Supervisor Jew made by Supervisor Ellsberg, seconded by Supervisor McGoldrick. Without objection, the supervisor is recused, and on the item, a roll call, please.
Supervisor Peskin.
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Sandoval. Sandoval, aye. Supervisor Alioto Pier.
Aye.
Alioto Pier, aye. Supervisor Amiano.
Aye.
Amiano, aye. Supervisor Daley.
Supervisor Daley.
Supervisor Dufte. Dufte, aye. Supervisor Ellsberg. Ellsberg, aye. Supervisor Jew is recused. Supervisor Maxwell. Maxwell, aye. Supervisor McGoldrick. McGoldrick, aye. Supervisor Mirakarimi.
Aye.
Mirakarimi, aye. There are ten ayes.
Ordinance is passed on first reading. Next item.
Item forty-four is a resolution approving the Eighth Amendment to the Agreement between the City and County of San Francisco and Sunset Scavenger Company for Sludge Hauling, increasing the total compensation to the contractor by 1.3 million to 12,415,000.
Roll call.
Supervisor Peskin.
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Sandoval. Sandoval, aye. Supervisor Alioto Pier.
Aye.
Alioto Pier, aye. Supervisor Amiano.
Aye.
Amiano, aye. Supervisor Daley. Daley, aye. Supervisor Dufte.
Aye.
Dufte, aye. Supervisor Ellsberg.
Aye.
Ellsberg, aye. Supervisor Jew.
Aye.
Jew, aye. Supervisor Maxwell. Maxwell, aye. Supervisor McGoldrick. McGoldrick, aye. Supervisor Mirakarimi.
Aye.
Mirakarimi, aye. There are eleven ayes.
The resolution is adopted. Can you read items forty-five through forty-seven, please?
Item forty-five is an ordinance amending the San Francisco Police Code by adding section 617 to prohibit the possession of sale of firearms or ammunition on property controlled by the City and County of San Francisco. Item forty-six is an ordinance amending the San Francisco Police Code by adding section 4512 to require that all handguns located within a residence be kept in a locked container or disabled with a trigger lock. Item forty-seven is an ordinance amending the San Francisco Police Code by amending section 613.10 to require licensed firearms dealers to transmit to the chief of police an inventory of firearms every six months.
What is this, meaning to show us there are too many people in the mayor's office and neighborhood services, or what's going on?
Dover time.
All right. To the item, Supervisor Mercurimi.
I think the legislation speak.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
Sorry. Thank you, Supervisor Amiano, for that public service announcement. This is regarding a technical amendment for item number forty-six on behalf of our, the number of sponsors, Mayor Supervisor Maxwell, et cetera. I'd like to introduce two non-substantive amendments to clarify any potential ambiguities in the legislation. I hand it them out, they should be on your desk. On page one, line five, strike the words "that is under the person's custody or control" and replace that with "owned or controlled by that person" to clarify that we are referring to the residence and not the handgun. And then page two, line 10, strike the words "in the possession" and add "under the control" to clarify that the weapon must be under the control of the officer, not just merely possession. That's it.
What's the difference?
It's really non-substantive.
Counselor, what's the difference?
Mr. President, you're changing the term from possession to control.
I can read, it's my first and only language, but what's it mean as a lawyer?
I believe as Supervisor Mercurimi indicated, that it's, that this is intended to address any potential ambiguities as to whether the handgun is owned versus in somebody's residence.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Mercurimi as to item number forty-six. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Supervisor Alioto Pier. Colleagues, can we do that without objection? That will be the order. To the item, Supervisor Daley.
Yeah, no, I, just given the mayor's engagement on the handgun ban that was on the ballot, I find this legislative package duplicitous at best. The mayor actually, during the campaign scoffed at the measure that was adopted by the voters of San Francisco, lacking it off as unconstitutional, harming the city's case in court. His comments were actually included in the brief that was filed by the well-heeled attorneys from the NRA. I'm going to vote against this package as Gavin Newsom grandstanding and give a heads-up to my colleague Supervisor Dufte that I want to keep helping his buddy Gavin Newsom out in his election efforts.
All right, that's enough out of you.
Well, I'm only responding to him.
On the item, a roll call, please.
On item forty-six...
No, items forty-five through forty-seven as a package.
Item forty-five through forty-six and forty-seven, Supervisor Peskin.
No.
Peskin, no. Supervisor Sandoval.
Forty-five through forty-seven. Forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven.
Sandoval, yes. Sandoval, aye. Supervisor Alioto Pier.
Aye.
Alioto Pier, aye. Supervisor Amiano.
Aye.
Amiano, aye. Supervisor Daley. Daley, no. Supervisor Dufte.
Aye.
Dufte, aye. Supervisor Ellsberg. Ellsberg, aye. Supervisor Jew.
No.
Jew, no. Supervisor Maxwell. Maxwell, aye. Supervisor McGoldrick. McGoldrick, aye. Supervisor Mirakarimi.
Aye.
Mirakarimi, aye. There are eight ayes and three nos.
Ordnances are passed on first reading. Next item, please.
Item forty-eight is a resolution appointing Supervisor Chris Daley and Supervisor Ross Mirakarimi, terms ending June 30th, 2009, to the Association of Bay Area Government Executive Board.
Motion to recuse Supervisors Daley and Mercurimi made by Supervisor McGoldrick, seconded by Supervisor Jew, without objection. On the item, a roll call, please.
Supervisor Peskin.
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Sandoval. Sandoval, aye. Supervisor Alioto Pier.
Aye.
Alioto Pier, aye. Supervisor Amiano. Amiano, aye. Supervisor Daley.
Hey, can you not lean against that light switch? All right, well, turn it back on. Lovely, keep going.
Supervisor Daley.
Is excused.
Excuse, excuse me. Supervisor Dufte.
Not excused.
Dufte, aye. Supervisor Ellsberg. Ellsberg, aye. Supervisor Jew.
Aye.
Jew, aye. Supervisor Maxwell. Maxwell, aye. Supervisor McGoldrick. Supervisor McGoldrick, aye. Mirakarimi is excused. There are nine ayes.
The resolution is adopted. Why don't we go to roll call for introductions?
First on roll call is Supervisor Peskin.
I'll submit.
Supervisor Mirakarimi.
Wow.
Next on roll call is Supervisor Ellsberg.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll submit most of my items. There is one item I'd like to articulate now, you know, based on the discussion earlier on golf, where we are going to do a study on the future use of the golf courses. I think it's important that we look at all the aspects of golf, so I'd like the city attorney to initiate legislation to landmark the golf courses. Alastair Mackenzie is the golf architect for Sharp Park. He has, he was the architect for some of the greatest golf courses throughout the world. And if we're going to, you know, apply certain landmark statuses for buildings, there's no reason why we shouldn't do it for golf courses. If you look at Article 10 of the Planning Code, it allows for this kind of thing. If we're going to look at all the options on the table, let's truly look at all the options on the table. I'll submit that request, and I look forward to that full and comprehensive discussion that we all want to have. Thank you.
Next on roll call is Supervisor Amiano. Supervisor Sandoval. Sandoval, submit. Supervisor McGoldrick.
I've already submitted.
Very good, thank you. And we're going to re-refer to Supervisor Mirakarimi. Supervisor Alioto Pier.
Please, no, 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 go for it.
I will, I'll submit most of it, but I do have an in memoriam tonight for Matthew E. Anderson. Matthew died suddenly in San Francisco on June 30th. He was 38 years old when he passed away. Although the years he lived were short, the life he lived will have a lasting impact on all those who knew him. Originally from upstate New York, Matt had made San Francisco his home. He was an options market maker on the Pacific Stock Exchange and had the good fortune to have traded on all four major U.S. options exchanges. He most recently worked at Portsmouth Financial as an institutional option salesman in the financial district. Matt was also very proud to have been part of the 1987 New York State High School Championship Football Team, which played in the Carrier Dome in Syracuse, New York. Matt went on to graduate from Michigan State University in 1992, and in his spare time, Matt helped his friends out by working at Jake's Stakes in the Marina and at Giordano Brothers Restaurant in North Beach. Matt survived by his mother Kathleen Anderson and proceeded in death by his father, Allison Anderson. He's also survived by his sisters Margaret Walmo of Toledo, Washington, and Catherine Anderson of Buffalo, New York. As well as, colleagues, for...
Thank you, Supervisor. Go ahead.
May I finish?
You may.
Matt is survived by his mother Kathleen Anderson and proceeded in death by his father Allison Anderson. He's also survived by his sisters Margaret Walmo of Toledo, Washington, and Catherine Anderson of Buffalo, New York, as well as his uncles, Robert Anderson of Mill Valley, Paul Anderson of Marcellus, New York, and by his aunt, Ann Hood, of Rochester, New York. Matt was a warm and kind soul who will be missed greatly by all of his friends in San Francisco.
Our condolences.
Next on roll call is Supervisor Jew.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Clerk. I have a hearing to determine why coyotes have been tolerated on public lands by city personnel in violation of the Health Code, why the Presidio Trust has permitted coyotes to proliferate despite complaints from Presidio tenants of threatening behavior and at least one lethal attack on a companion animal, determine what plan of action that the city has in place to protect people and their companion animals who frequent city parks, and how the city personnel propose to find the remaining coyotes and relocate them to a place that's more appropriate in order to restore the public confidence and the safety of our parks and neighborhoods. And other items I would submit, Madam Chair.
Can't wait to see what those are next.
Supervisor Maxwell is next on roll call.
Thank you, colleagues. I'm introducing a resolution urging the Public Utilities Commission to move expeditiously to complete and present for the Board of Supervisors consideration agreements necessary for the development of combustion turbine, of a combustion turbine project to promote the goals of the city's electricity resource plan. After years of negotiation with California Independent Systems Operator, the city set forth an action plan which has listed 14 items to be completed in order to shut down the old power plant in Petrerro. We have completed all but four of those, and the combustion turbine is one of the items listed in the plan with the goal of shutting down Petrerro Power Plant. Local control of any city generation can reduce the risk of market power abuses and enable the city to mandate the use of cleaner fuels when feasible, or to close down any generation, generation such as Petrerro Power Plant when it is no longer needed. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Why don't we go to, that will conclude roll call for introductions. Why don't we go to general public, Supervisor Mercurimi, you wish to be re-refered?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Colleagues, I want us to improve upon our ability to implement the workforce development programs here in the sitting county of San Francisco. I believe that for the dollars that we spend in our general fund matched by state and federal dollars, which results into a staggering amount of nearly $75 million per year, coupled, I think, with the motion that you are probably aware of that I made in concert with Supervisor Peskin during the budget process in putting on reserve Department of Human Services, HSA's, $40 million on a six-month, I think, stipulation because it is my intention, and I think it's the intention of many people here, that we would like to pursue a best practices methodology in trying to approve upon a system that many will agree just doesn't work very well. Workforce development is spread over approximately 12 different departments and agencies per capita from all the studies that we've been able to glean from. We actually expend about the most amount of general fund dollars or city dollars towards a program that really cannot account for the results that I think that we would all like. So with the support of Supervisor Peskin, Amiano, and Maxwell, I'm submitting ordinance that helps centralize our workforce development programs. I'll submit the rest, except there's two in memoriam. One in memoriam for Joe Knopka, who came to San Francisco in 1976, Upper Haight resident, started RAD, Residents Against Drugs, against local drug dealers on the streets of San Francisco, in particular in the Upper Haight, gained quite a bit of notoriety in the late 80s and early 90s, and also ran for supervisor from that area in year 2000, ran for Board of Supervisors twice. He was very dedicated in preventing crime and drug-related violence in that in our sector of the city. Next, an in memoriam for Harry Driggs. Harry was a well-known graphic artist, cartoonist, and sculptor. Harry was a key part of launching the San Francisco Haight-Ashbury counterculture autistic scene in the 1960s, known for his sardonic wit, generosity of his talents, and very, very kind man. I've known him for probably about 20 years. Despite his Parkinson's disease, he retained his vibrancy and continued to create art, and he was around since the early days of the Green Party. We shall miss him. We shall miss him. I'll submit the rest.
Those items shall be referred. Why don't we go to public comment, Madam Clerk? Mr. Chafee, we just have to say the requisite words before you get to say yours.
Item fifty-four is public comment. The next item on the agenda is public comment, an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, including items being considered today which have not been considered by a board committee and excluding items which have been considered by a board committee. Members of the public may address the board for up to three minutes. Each member of the public will be allotted the same number of minutes to speak, except that public speakers using translation assistance will be allowed to testify for twice the amount of the public testimony time limit. If simultaneous translation services are used, speakers will be governed by the public testimony time limit applied to speakers not requesting translation assistance. The president or the board may limit the total testimony to thirty minutes. Members of the public who want a document placed on the overhead for display should clearly state such and subsequently remove the document when they want the screen to return to live coverage of the meeting.
First speaker, please.
Mr. President, I assume I have the usual two minutes. The timer actually says one minute.
We will, it's the usual two. There you go.
Thank you, Ben.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Stop the corporate rape of the public library, don't give money to the Friends and Foundation, don't accept money from the Friends and Foundation, and you value public libraries, so you create a library set aside. President Peskin said it, the road to hell indeed. Let's get right to it. It is no accident that corp, the exploitation of our intellectual commons is analogous to exploitation of our environment. The corporations treat this city like it was a third-world country. What is the first thing that such corporations do but subordinate the local politicians with flattery? Corporate philanthropies are just another mechanism by which super-rich pervert the goals of society to serve themselves. In the case of the library, it is openly acknowledged that the library is in the hands of exclusive proprietary philanthropists. What is not openly acknowledged is that they are intent on destroying the library as a democratic resource. The public thinks that the protection they have- It is time to say no to the reducing the benefits of society being placed in fewer and fewer hands. Well, that wasn't quite supposed to stop there. In any case, the point is that democracy has replaced corporate philanthropy as the powerful, super-rich control of our republic. Stop the corporate rape of the public library, the lies cost more than the money. Thank you very much.
Good, I've been replaced by Jim Sutton. Next speaker.
I have graphics here. This is the Prince of Holland, Prince of Orange of Holland. His name is Alexander, and he sent me this Christmas card. It sort of brings me to my public comment. I know, President, thanks for your work, President Peskin and all the supervisors, and I know you're a fan of the Emperor Norton, and he's in coma, he was a pioneering person, and he'd say this. "Said the king to the people of San Francisco everywhere, do you hear what I hear? Do you hear what I hear ringing through the streets everywhere? Do you see what I see, what I see ringing through the streets of San Francisco everywhere? Do you hear what I say, what I said? Better days, better days ahead, for San Francisco, better days ahead. Better days are coming ahead. Listen to your heart when it's calling to you. Listen to your heart, there's nothing else you can do. I don't know where you're going, don't know where you've been. Listen to your heart, listen inside. And there are public comment voices in the Board of Supervisors that want to be heard. This is the magic, the beauty that's been. Listen to your heart when it's calling to you. Listen to your heart, there's nothing else that you can do."
Next speaker. Thank you, Walter.
Thanks, President Peskin. Good night.
Good night, Ed. Good night, Walter.
Hello, I'm Sylvia Johnson, and I have been going through a lot of schooling exams in my education and my GED progresses, and none of these terms mentioned, but I do have a memory that will focus into your categories and your code numbers on your page difficulties that is a lot of problems with eyesight and health, too. And in these suspicions that I have, I'm able to detect there's some major crime going on, and I reported, as I did report the disadvantaged man over there by the shipyard I had incurred with hiding things, and I learned a lot of democracy people that was being, that I need to be doing more out in airplane and getting research more advantage of having people that need heal the hell instead of the stop because, and I know it's not, it's everybody here that will proceed in making this work, and you have a lot of disadvantage, then the process goes down.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Espinalda Jackson, Bayview Hunters Point. I would like to say that I attended the Land Use Committee yesterday, although Mr. Goldrick, Supervisor Goldrick, had stepped out, and I see he's talking there, so he's not going to hear me again. When this power plant task force was set up about three or four years ago, I went and asked that certain people not be appointed to that committee. I was told by Sophie Maxwell that it wasn't going to be heard that day, and it was not up for discussion. But when I left that meeting and I went to the Port Commission meeting, I'd be darned if she didn't bring that thing back and appointed the people who had conflict of interest. Mr. Moss, who talked very bad to people, I had asked him that he need to recuse himself because I felt he had a conflict of interest because of the fact he had received one point and a half million dollars of PGE money that was given to Zip Code nine four one two four. I even came before your board here and asked for an audit to see how much of that thirteen million dollars that was allocated to Zip Code nine four one two four had actually been going to Zip Code nine four one two four. Did you do anything? No, you did not. Here, people have been coming talking about problems we're having. This came in the mail to the people in Bayview Hunters Point, where there's going to start more construction work. I went to the redevelopment commission this evening. They didn't even know about this notice. You don't know about the notice. When are you all going to stop that during work from going out there in that community until something is done about the health of my people? When are you all going to make a move on that?
All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson. That will conclude general public comment. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adoption without committee reference calendar?
Items fifty-five through fifty-eight are the adoption without committee reference. A unanimous vote is required for adoption of a resolution today. Any supervisor may require any resolution to go to committee. Item fifty-five, resolution extending by an additional forty-five days the prescribed time within which the Planning Commission may render its decision on a proposed ordinance to amend the Planning Code of the Residential Inclusionary Affordable Housing Program. Item fifty-six, resolution endorsing the two thousand and seven Immigrant Rights Summit to be convened at the Bill Graham Civic Auditorium and declaring September fifteenth, two thousand and seven, as Immigrant Rights Day in the City and County of San Francisco. Item fifty-seven, resolution recognizing the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Port Olive Ranch Library and commending the San Francisco Public Library and its team for their hard work and commitment to San Francisco and its residents. Item fifty-eight, resolution authorizing the Department of the Environment to accept and expend a grant in the amount of fifteen thousand from the California Breathing for the purpose of implementing the Bayview Hunters Point Healthy Homes Project.
Would any member like an item or items severed? Seeing none on the calendar, a roll call, please.
Supervisor Peskin?
Aye.
Peskin, aye. Supervisor Sandoval? Sandoval, aye. Supervisor Alioto Pier? Alioto Pier, aye. Supervisor Ramiano? Ramiano, aye. Supervisor Daley? Daley, aye. Supervisor Dufti? Dufti, aye. Supervisor Ellsberg? Ellsberg, aye. Supervisor Jew? Jew, aye. Supervisor Maxwell? Maxwell, aye. Supervisor McGoldrick? McGoldrick, aye. Supervisor Mirakarimi? Mirakarimi, aye. There are eleven ayes.
The resolutions are adopted. Madam Clerk, would you please read the in memoriam?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Supervisor Alioto Pier for the late Matt Anderson, on behalf of Supervisor Mirakarimi, Mr. Joe Knopka, and Mr. Harry Driggs.
By unanimous vote, the Board of Supervisors is adjourned.